I know to call the meeting to order.
Sir, second?
Second.
Wonderful. Okay, roll call Diana.
Present.
Trent.
Present.
And myself, I'm here. All right, I'd like to open it up to public comment. So this would be things that are not necessarily on the agenda. Do we have anyone here? You can raise your hand and we'll get to you that way. I'd like to give it a little bit of a moment here to get everybody. Who wants to speak that available time? I don't want to you?
I don't, Madam Chair. Zoom participants, please raise your hand. Using the raise hand feature if you'd like to address the committee on items that are not on the agenda.
All right, I guess we've given it enough time. Do you think so?
But I think that's appropriate. Yes, we I don't have any, I don't show any hands raised at this moment.
Okay. So also, let's move on to is there any new business? That anyone would like to bring up?
Madam Chair, that would be the the item, the business item.
All right, well, let's go ahead and move forward and we'll start. I guess Nor you have a presentation in regards to the public service programs and the capital improvement projects and the voting how that has been going on.
And the That is correct, Madam Chair. Yes, staff do have a presentation, a brief presentation. Okay, allow me one second to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Excellent, perfect. Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, committee members and participants of this meeting. My name is Haron and I'm the Community Development Block Grant Program Analyst. I'm here tonight to present staff recommendation with regards to funding allocations for the proposed public service in capital improvement projects for fiscal years 2022, 23 and 2023 and 2024. As you probably know, this is a continuation of our discussion from February 10th where the committee received a staff report as well as the applications that were submitted to the city for consideration for funding. And on February 16th and 17th, this committee received agency presentations on the proposed programs and projects directly from the applicants. And tonight, staff is asking this committee to receive the staff report and put forward funding recommendation to the City Council for the proposed projects. Again, just as a reminder, the city of Seaside operates its CDBG program under a two-year funding cycle. So our next funding cycle will begin on July 1st and through June 30th, 2024. And hence applicants are requesting funds for two years under the cycle. Our program year begins on July 1st and ends on June 30th. And the applications that you are considering tonight were solicited through a process called Notice of Funding Availability, which is a comprehensive document that the city posts on its website and publicizes through local newspaper and other outreach methods. And it also outlines all the thresholds within which applicants must respond. And the city of Seaside has historically used its CDBG funds to to fund public service programming as well as public facilities and infrastructure projects. Mainly neighborhood facilities such as youth centers, substance abuse facilities and parks and community centers. Just a little bit about public services. They cover a wide range of public service activities, including education programs, senior legal and youth services, and fair housing activities. The next slide will show list all of the eligible public service activities. CDBG funds may be used to pay labor supplies and material as well as to operate and or maintain the portion of a facility in which the public service is located. This is only permissible under the public services category. And again, as a reminder, public service funding is subject to a 15% cap of the city's annual grant allocation and program income. You know, I'll touch, I'll provide the exact numbers or approximate numbers in an upcoming slide. As I mentioned before, this slide shows the full list of eligible public service activities. If this committee approves the proposed public service applications for this upcoming cycle, we will be covering quite a few of these areas, including the substance abuse services, youth services, legal services, and let's see, I believe also fair housing and tenant and landlord counseling. So we will be covering quite a few of these areas with our public service funding. In a little bit about public facilities and infrastructure, public facilities and in infrastructure improvements are interpreted to include all facilities and improvements that are publicly owned or that are owned by a nonprofit and open to the general public during normal business hours. Very, very important. Eligible activities include the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or installation of public facilities and improvements. The other component, very important component of public of this category is eligible costs. So an eligible activity may not necessarily be and may not qualify for CDBG funds if the costs associated with that project are not eligible. So for example, energy efficiency improvements, handicapped accessibility improvements, architectural design features such as sculptures and fountains are eligible costs. However, ongoing maintenance and operating costs associated with a capital improvement project are not eligible costs. And this slide shows the full list of public facilities and infrastructure projects that can be undertaken with the public facilities and infrastructure funds. Again, if if this committee considers a staff recommendation and approves the three projects, we will be targeting the youth center, neighborhood facilities, and parks and recreation facilities categories from this list. We're addressing these these areas with with our funds. You know, just leave it up on the screen for a second. So you all have a chance to glance at this. Okay, moving on. In the next two years, in fiscal year 2022 and 2023, in fiscal year 2023, 2024, the city anticipates receiving approximately $480,000 per year. And that amount is the is is as a result of $375,000 in CDBG allocation in approximately $105,000 in program income from the embassy suites ground lease. And all the $480,000 per year, the city is is limited by how much funding can be allocated to public service programs. So for public service grants, the city can allocate up to 15% of the total amount. The city can allocate up to 20% for CDBG program planning and administration. And the domain, the remainder of the funds can be allocated for public facilities and infrastructure. Okay. This slide shows the public service grant applications that we received in response to the NOFA. The columns in the middle that are highlighted in yellow show the the funding request amounts that were requested by the the applicants. And as you can see, at the bottom of year one, in year two, the request, the total requested amount far exceed the amount that will be available to us for public service programming. Staff are recommending lowering those amounts to up to the the cap limit. Staff recommend approving the full requested funding amount for Eden Council for Hope and Opportunity and Gathering for Women Monterey and equally distributing the remainder of the $72,000 among the other four applicants. And we can revisit these slides. Should this committee like me to bring it up on the screen? Again, this is not a set in stone rule. It was for simplicity purpose as well as to provide basis for discussion for this committee. Okay. This slide shows our public facilities and infrastructure grant applications that we received in response to the NOFA. We anticipate having approximately $312,000 available per fiscal year for public facilities and infrastructure projects. Again, the three columns in the middle indicate that are highlighted in in yellow indicates the requested amounts from the six applicants. And the the columns on the on the right highlighted in green indicate staff recommendation. The three projects, including the portable rehab phase two in the community mural proposed by Monterey Peninsula Unified School District as well as the the purchase of the automatic flow wrapping machine by proposed by Meals on Wheels of Monterey Peninsula are not recommended for funding by staff because those three projects are not quite responsive to CDBG regulations. And then they are also in alignment with with this committee's evaluation of applications, which I'll show on the next screen. Okay, so this committee has had an opportunity to independently and individually evaluate each application through our grant management software, CDS, or citydataservices.net. The column on the far, I guess, left that where you see the average, the percentage in with numbers, those are the the average ratings of the three members. This, the projects listed at the top with the the green table header are our public service projects. And you can see they were all, they have all received a score of over 70%. And again, that's the average of the the three evaluators. And the projects at the bottom with the blue table header are the six projects. Public facilities and infrastructure projects that were evaluated interviewed by this committee. And if again, the average for the the three projects that staff are not recommending for funding received less than 70% in of scores. So staff's recommendation tonight is to hold a public hearing and risk and receive any public comment as well as to consider staff recommendation, including the allocation of $96,000 to program planning and administration. This represents 20% of the program CDBG grant allocation as well as program income. And staff requests this committee to discuss and and put forward funding allocations or recommendation to the City Council, which staff will then include in a staff report to the City Council on March 17th, which will be followed by a 30-day public comment period after the council directs staff to draft the annual action plan. And then we'll return that draft annual action plan to the City Council again on April 21st for adoption. And that concludes my staff presentation. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Let's open this up to the committee. Someone want to make any comments or open discussion? Committee members have no comment?
Madam Chair, if I may, before we the committee deliberates on this, could we please open this for any public comments?
Absolutely, yes.
Unless there are any questions like preliminary questions to staff, I can address those and then take public comment. But if there are no questions to staff, then we can open it for public comment.
I do have a question for staff. So do we have to go in the order for each organization that's on the agenda? For deliberation?
It's totally up to this committee. It falls within your purview. My recommendation would be to handle rather than going from public services to public facilities to handle one category at a time. And then we can probably look at one of these tables. Either the the these tables with the staff recommendation or this this table with the this committee's evaluation summary and then go off of this and then in a, I think that would be the most efficient way to tackle this. And that way you can provide direction to staff as to how much you'd like to allocate for each of these projects.
Okay. Okay, is there any comment from any of the participants or any questions? All right, did you want to open it up Diana? I think I agree with Nori that we should start off first with the public service and then move on after that. I, but when I'm looking at the figures, as far as what the recommendation is, I agree with that. It's basically what what I was thinking and I I think it's fair. Does anybody have any comments? Trent, Diana?
I agree with you. I think it's it's a fair fair split we could come up with probably.
Do any of the participants have any comments that they'd like to bring up?
Madam Chair, would you have a comment?
Please, I'd like to hear it.
Good evening. I am grateful for the way that it has been divided up. I I would like more, but what you have given is we would, we appreciate that very much. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Angela, just for the record, could you please state your name and the organization you're representing?
Sorry, my name is Angela Britt and I am representing Greater Victor Temple After School Tutoring Program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comment.
Madam, Madam Chair, if there is no any additional discussion on the funding recommendation for FY 2022, since 2024, I would like to move to approve the following six recommendations for Greater Victor Temple, Legal Services for Seniors, Meals on Wheels for Monterey Peninsula, Eden Council of Hope and Opportunity, Gather for Women in Monterey, Girls Inc. of Central Coast.
Okay, I'm seeing some comments come up in the chat box. Did anybody want to say anything out loud? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm reading one comment, so please allow me one, please.
Yeah, I wanted to address those.
Ms. Sherry, I know you have you have a comment in writing. I can actually read it aloud. So this is, this comment is from Sherry. I don't understand that the services are prorated as a percentage. As a committee, you had the Boys and Girls Club number one, but the funding is in third place. Thank you for that comment. And that's, that's the comment is for the committee.
Sherry, who do you represent? I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Yes.
Yes, I'm a previous from Community Partnership for Youth. I've been in the community for 30 years and it's understandable that we have always had the services done in the percentages so that you can see that it's real. My understanding is when you as a committee chose, you had the Boys and Girls Club number one then the city and then human, maybe I'm reading it wrong. But and then
Yeah, thank you.
I'm a step ahead of you. That's why I put it in the chat rather than vocally. I didn't mean to get involved in the in the services right now.
Right.
So this is for the capital improvement grant application.
Correct.
And we're currently discussing just the first six for public service. So we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we'll certainly take your comment when we get to the capital.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I can provide a response to that comment.
Okay, percentage one up. Okay, you know, here. And the way we we got this is that each and each of us individually did our own assessment. And this is the combination of the three of us.
Madam Chair, may I that since now that we are on this topic, can I add to your comments?
Yes.
Okay, so the committee evaluations were received after staff had drafted the report and they in put together their recommendation. And staff's recommendation were based on the applicant's track record of funding with the city. So for example, Community Human Services has historically received $30,000 per year for the rehab of their facility. Boys and Girls Club of Monterey County has received approximately $80,000 to $90,000 a year. But based on the presentation staff gathered that some of the improvements could wait until a future funding cycle. And that's why we decreased or staff recommended, you know, decreased funding amount than previous years. So we staff kept prior funding approvals or approved amounts in in mind when we drafted the recommendation as well as the facts that were gathered and the the comments that were made during agency presentation. So those were kept in mind when staff drafted a presentation. But of course, it's 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 up to this committee to determine how much exactly should be allocated towards each project. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. And we can go back to public services and and complete that motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I had moved for public service. We need a second in order to be able to discuss.
I'll second the motion.
Great, let's move forward on that.
Madam Chair, if there's no discussion, then can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, let's go ahead and do a roll call and Diana?
I do have a statement I would like to make prior to the roll call, if I may, Madam Chair.
Please go right ahead.
Um, so it's very important, at least for my state of mind when I make decisions, especially spending money that doesn't belong to me. I want to make sure that all the public service, even the new applicants for the first time applying for CDBG funds that they understand that they have a responsibility to provide this committee so we could provide feedback back to the City Council on the progress that they make. And you know, I trust and hope that we we make the right decision today, but that we could count on on that piece because that's very important. The public has the right to know how their tax dollars are spent responsibly and feasibly. So that's the statement that I wanted to make.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, no, you're fine. That's all I had to say.
Yes, I just wanted to say that we will in our future meetings be me be asking for presentations from the awardees in regards to how everything has been coming along. So that will again be addressed in the future, not necessarily at this meeting at this time.
Madam Chair, if I can please add a clarification, just additional clarification.
Please.
So staff will be bringing forth a draft work plan. Hopefully at our next meeting in March. And there the committee can determine the frequency of presentations needed by both public service and capital improvement project applicants. Hopefully on an on a quarterly basis, just to tie it with the 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 online reporting requirements that the city has in place.
Okay. Any comments on that from any committee members?
I look forward, I do look forward to hearing each one of the public service organizations grow as far as being able to tell their story because I think that helps us understand the great work that they do for the community and it's very important.
Yes, I'm looking forward to seeing how the funds will help each one grow and how they're going to move forward with that. Because I I think it's all very exciting and I'm very happy to be able to have the opportunity to be on a committee where we can grant money out to these different organizations for the city of Seaside to move forward. Okay. Let's move on to public facilities and infrastructure.
Well, Madam Chair, we have to vote.
Oh. Minor detail. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a motion as to that we all agree to go ahead and finalize the figures for public service with the total of $71,998 for year 2022 through 2024.
Madam Chair, we do have a motion. We just need a roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call Diana?
I.
Trent?
I.
And I for me also.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes. Okay, so we're on to capital Okay, so we're on to capital improvement. Do you want to go ahead and have any comments on that, committee members? Anything you want to say or add? Diana?
I actually not sure if we should. I would like to pull MPUSD Monterey Adult Schools Portable Rehab Phase Two Monterey Peninsula Unified School District Community Mural, Meals on Wheels Monterey Peninsula Inc. Automatic Flow Wrapping Machine. I would like to pull those three grants out to discuss removal from the recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I I agree with the recommendation, the way that has already been done. Yes. Trent, do you have any comment on that?
No, I don't. I agree with the staff report on that one.
Okay.
I do. So, Madam Chair, if we're removing those three organisms, those three capital improvement projects from moving forward, and I would like, if there's no further discussion, to call the motion for a roll call.
Fine, is there an, and let's do roll call, Trent?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, did we have a second? I've a committee member Bergman moved, but I didn't hear.
I'll second it.
Great, Trent, thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and do roll call, Trent.
I.
Diana?
I.
And I also. So that is it. $312,000 is allotted.
Well, no, we haven't done that yet, Madam Chair. We just removed three projects that didn't qualify to move forward.
I thought we agreed on the others. Okay.
But we could do a motion now to approve the City of Seaside Engineer Department of Kinsol Park Improvements, the Community Health Service for Genesis House Facility Improvements, and the Boys and Girls Club of Monterey County Seaside Clubhouse Improvement. If I have a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
Is there any discussion we have to discuss? Does everybody agree?
Madam Chair, there was a public comment with regards to
Yes, I had forgotten.
If the committee wants to address that staff provided some clarification, and I don't know if any committee member wants to provide any additional details.
Um, I would like to share my experience when we did the evaluations reviewing each one of the applicants. We had the opportunity to look at the actual application, what was, you know, what was being requested. We got information to make an informed decision to make sure that each one of the projects that was requesting met the criteria that was required. We also had the opportunity and gave a platform to hear from each one of the organizations so they could tell their story to give us a better understanding. And personally, I my score, I know scored pretty decent and high for the following three applicants. And it was an average of our combined scores. I don't know if anybody else wants to share their experience with the process.
I I agree with that. I was trying to remember what the exact question was of the the woman who was asking. Are you still with us?
Thank you, I am.
Good. Do you want to go ahead and explain again what your question was? I wasn't quite sure.
In the past, and in my observation for this, the program, when you came to that amount, it was done by a percentage. When I look at the programs, I don't see a percentage being used. I just see a number. And if you as a committee said that the Boys and Girls Club was the top of their list, then they shouldn't be at the bottom of the list in terms of of percentages. I just, that's just my observation. I'm not saying that's what happened, but and did the Boys and Girls Club have an opportunity after the decision was made that they would be in third place? Did they have an opportunity to explain? Or did the staff just review? In the past, the the community committee makes the recommendations and the staff presents it. It sounds tonight like the staff is presenting, and you are having the rubber stamp. I maybe, that may be totally wrong. I've just been through this for so many years. It's just an observation, and I may be totally off.
No, I I think that's a valid question. We are all new, so I'm sure it can come across that way. But if it was done with percentages in the past, we just determined when we looked at the total amount to try to make it fair that everybody has
I I know that my myself, we had the opportunity to specifically ask questions to the Boys and Girls Club when they presented. And I I asked them questions just to get a better understanding of their floor replacement, because there are criterias that we have to make sure that is being done, make sure that it's not a maintenance that the individuals' capital funds for, actually has to be a full replacement of that floor. And each of the applicants are also aware that is they don't get approved for the whole amount that they were requesting, that they have other ways and means to to balance that off cost set. But this is just an average of each one of the members of what they provided feedback for based on the presentation, the application review that we got to review that data to see how it was broken down. And we all had, you know, there could have been, it's an average percentage. It doesn't mean an actual percentage of what we as members are saying for that particular project, how much should go to that project or not.
Right, I I think with the Boys and Girls Club, part of what their request was, was to completely replace the floor in the kitchen, and we felt, well, I know I did. I can't really speak for everyone. But I felt that there was a possibility of doing a repair on that. And that's why I thought that would be fair, where they could still move forward. And they do have the ability to get funds from other places, but I wanted to make sure that they did get, you know, something. And as far as Genesis House goes, we felt that, well, I felt that what they were asking for was just a little much, and it was not something we could meet. But to take that $312,000 and appropriate, appropriate, appropriately give it to everyone, this is just the figure that I thought would be appropriate. And I'm glad that I wasn't the only one thinking that way so that we can function as a committee that works together. Does that
Sorry to interrupt. Can I please add to this conversation?
Please.
I think Ms. Sherry has a good observation. So staff put these funding recommendations together just to be proactive and to facilitate the discussion of this committee. Not the intention was not for this committee to rubber stamp staff recommendation, but to to facilitate the the discussion. So we just wanted to be proactive. And then if if you look at the percentages, they were only within a point from each other. So and then the percentages really with regards, if you take a look at the the funding amount requested, $250,000 versus $40,000, then the percentage ranking in allocating funds based on those percent percentage scores that they have received really is is not, you know, a practical way to go about this. Staffs, and again, this is my recommendation, and in and in it was really based on the presentations that were received, the application material, the scope of work, and the value that their projects would deliver to our residents. And then the preparedness as well. So and just based on on my reading of the application, there were, there's minimal information included in the Community Human Services in Boys and Girls Club Monterey. They're they're basically cost estimates and not shovel ready. You know, projects that have the plans approved, they have, it's it's like shovel ready project that they can move forward with. And plus, it's again, as staff, based on reading the 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 applications, the scope of work, we felt staff felt that the 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 Coutino Park Improvements is a significant project and should take precedence because it is going to benefit the community at large. And if we look at its benefits per beneficiary, it is, we are really maximizing our federal monies by giving it to a project that's going to have lasting impact on our community. So that was just the rationale of staff that used, and I'm glad the that the committee's evaluations fell in alignment with the staff recommendation in in thought process. But and again, it is the CDAC's purview. They they have the discretion to change these amounts should they feel that these need to be changed based on 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 any grounds, whether it's the percentage or another factor. But in ultimately, these will be reviewed in this CDAC's recommendation will be considered by the city council, who will have the final authority on making the final appropriations. And then these numbers also just a full disclaimer could potentially change depending on the actual amount that HUD will allocate to the city. So in these amounts could potentially increase a little bit or decrease. And in in those events, the staff will administratively in proportionately increase or decrease the amounts of these sub recipients in which won't which won't be substantial based on what has happened in the past.
Can I also share that as a as a committee member, and I have served in previous committees and other jurisdictions, the data that the staff provides to committee members to review and make observations and decisions, those are coming from professionals, you know, the experts in these fields to be able to give us the information of what those project proposals are, so we can make a sound decision that those proposals are meeting local and federal and state guidelines. So they could actually be completed if approved. So there's a lot of hard work that always comes from from the staff that puts this work together to present to committee members to make those sound decisions. And that should be highlighted. I don't think any of us wake up every day to rubber stamp anything. We rely heavily on receiving that factual information and data from the experts to make those reasonable, realistic decisions like we have tonight.
Madam Chair, I don't recall. I I know we had a first and a second followed by some discussion. Did we do a roll call?
No, not as of yet. I guess we can move to that if there's no other discussion or comments from anybody. Trent, did you have anything you wanted to add?
So I just want to sort of point out, like, the the reason like that I was comfortable with the Boys and Girls Club getting a smaller percentage is because some of their like things that they presented seemed like it could wait a little bit longer, whereas the the Genesis House was talking about like flooring damage and things like that that were seemed fairly urgent. So that's how I prioritize that.
Okay. All right, let's do a roll call. All those in favor of $312,000 being allocated this way with capital improvement grants? Diane?
I.
Trent?
I.
And I as well. So that has been moved. Okay, we'll move on to any reports from committee members. Does anyone have a report or something they'd like to add? No?
I would like to add something. This is for the community mural. I know we're not going to be able to to give any money for that, but the 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 Seaside Art and History Commission is one of their objectives is is putting murals out in the community. So I think that would be a good a good place to start for for that objective.
Okay, that's a good idea. Well said. Anything else from anybody? Diana?
I I know that I I did my due diligence reviewing each one of the applicants, and I do feel bad that the three groups that we did not move forward for recommendation. But they didn't really meet the statue that will qualify them, so I didn't see any sense of pushing them forward as we knew that they were going to get denied some phase in the process because it didn't meet criteria.
Can you mute yourself if you're not speaking? We're getting some background noise.
Yeah, so I didn't feel comfortable approving a group knowing that somewhere along the process they were, it was going to stop the process, because that was going to take away from the pot that was available to grant. So we want to make sure when applicants come forward that they meet the criteria to qualify for this funding, and that is not going to provide a risk long term down the line to the city also, because they also have a responsibility to taxpayers to make sure that when things get approved, that we're being feasibly responsible, you know, so this is is, you know, this money has to be spent wisely. It's not a lot. We have to make sure we stretch it out. But we have to make sure that it's accessing the targeted population. And I really felt those three groups, what they presented with the capital improvement project, it didn't get full access to the targeted population. And that's why I made the decision that that I made. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I please add a comment? Although this is not the appropriate place to discuss this, but I just wanted to follow up with a quick comment. So ultimately, in in the very near future, so staff will be preparing an annual action plan, which will incorporate these projects with full justification in in compliance with HUD regulations. So we will be putting forward a proposal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which will include all of these projects that we approved today and or the next couple of weeks with council approval. Those will be presented to HUD, submitted to HUD for approval. So we will be the applicants for these projects, and we will be, we will need to justify these projects and prove that they meet all of the thresholds. So thank you, committee member Bergman, for bringing that point up. So I just wanted to put that this out there that ultimately, we will be proposing these projects to HUD, and we will be, we will need to justify the completely the conformance with national objectives in in all the thresholds and regulations. So just wanted to
Yes, I I I would like to add, I think in the future, maybe staff could focus a little more on when the applications come in, and you see that something does not qualify, that that be addressed at, you know, in the beginning when the applications come in or at the workshop, so that people are more clear as to what they're applying for. they're applying for. Does it really meet the standards? Does it really meet the test to qualify?
Certainly. And, and the NOFA allows for more than a month-long timeframe for applicants to ask questions from staff, seek technical assistance. And also the purpose of the, the pre-proposal workshop is, in, one of the reason why the city requires it in or requires attendance at that meeting is to make sure that everybody is on the same page, understands the NOFA requirements as well as the minimum compliance threshold. So, yeah, but, but that's a great point. I think we can probably do more, maybe have more than one pre-proposal sessions or maybe even one-on-one with potential applicants.
Right.
We rely on them to reach out to, to staff or, or assistants.
I, I just want to make sure that these the ones that did not get an award understand clearly why they did not. And that it's not a big surprise to them thinking that I had no idea that what I was proposing didn't meet the guidelines. And I understand that the, the staff is available for consultation and questions, but I think that should be focused on a little bit more.
And again, with, with regards to the three applications, staff, the city, staff will be sending out letters explaining the reason for not, not moving them forward.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yes.
Okay. So do you have any additional reports that you want to give at this?
Are we on, on staff reports now?
Yes.
I, I don't have any reports, but I think it might be appropriate to ask the committee, as to our next meeting. Staff is thinking maybe hold our next meeting on the fourth Wednesday in March. You may not have access to your calendar, but I would appreciate if you can let me know at your earliest convenience.
Is that the seventeenth?
That's the twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth.
Of March, yes. The seven, on the seventeenth, we have, we will have the city council public hearing, receiving CEDAC's, coming tonight's recommendation. So staff will be busy with that public hearing as well as drafting. The twenty fourth, the fourth Wednesday, we also don't have other conflicting meetings. With the exception of probably just the quarterly homeless committee meetings on that fourth Thursday.
Can I get clarification real quick? Because the twenty fourth of March falls on a Thursday. Wednesday is the Wednesday the sixteenth is, I mean, Wednesday the twenty third is the third Wednesday of the month. So I just want to make sure, is it the Thursday or Wednesday?
I am proposing fourth Wednesday or suggesting.
Because there aren't any other meetings on that night?
Usually not on fourth Wednesday, fourth Thursdays, with the exception of the homeless committee that meets on fourth Thursdays quarterly. So that's, I, I'm hoping that they're not meeting on that Thursday. But even if they do, which, that should be fine. We can still televise our meeting on, on a different channel, YouTube channel.
Okay.
Does that give us, does that give us any time for any decisions this committee might have to do that we might have a time sensitive timeline that we have to meet?
We won't, this committee won't have any time sensitive items. I, I believe, I'm thinking our next item should be to tackle a work plan either for the next year or two years. And really come up with the schedule of events, frequency of agency presentations and things of that nature. And staff will put together a draft work plan based on prior work plans and then the, this committee will have the opportunity to change anything you wish.
Madam Chair, the fourth Wednesday, which is March twenty third, I'm available.
Okay, does Thursday work for you?
Thursday works for me as well.
Okay, and Trent?
Yeah, that works for me also.
Okay, I just wanted to also say thank you to the committee. We were under a big crunch to have to do all this in two weeks. And we did a lot of reading, a lot of studying, a lot of questioning. And, you know, we're not able to speak among ourselves. So I thought it was very good that we agreed on a lot of this. And I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work and commitment to getting all this done. Thank you.
Thank you. I like this. This is very transparent.
Yes, and I, I certainly want to keep it that way so that it is transparent. And I want to make sure that our meetings are always open and scheduled at a time where it's as convenient as possible for the participants and the citizens of the City of Seaside to come and attend our meetings and give us input and make their comments. I'd like to see more of that. And as I'm out and about, I will be approaching people and letting them know about our meetings and that we, you know, have three committee members and we should have many more than that. So I guess at this point, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, I had one quick question.
Oh, please, go ahead. Surprise.
It was for staff. I just wanted to know if there's going to be like an official announcement of the, the ones that did get recommended. Is that being published somewhere?
Yes, so tonight's meeting was published in Monterey County Weekly, our public hearing with Zoom link and information. We will be public, publicizing the, the upcoming two city council meetings in Monterey County Weekly as well. And just sending out email blasts. Yeah, but that's, yeah, and then once, so at this March seventeenth meeting, once staff presents CEDAC's recommendation, funding recommendation that was approved tonight, staff, the, the council will then direct, either go with your recommendation or maybe make changes, whatever the direction will be at that meeting, will put that into a draft annual action plan. It's, it's a lengthy document. It will make that available for public comment and review. And it will include the, the projects that both CEDAC and the city council approve. So that's really, that'll be the document where applicants can, can read about, you know, their allocation. Well, we send out award letters later in the fiscal year, like around May. Once we have shipped our annual action plan to HUD, that's when we will be sent. Because at that point, we will have the allocation amount from HUD as well. So we'll have a, a good idea as to what the final amount will be. Whereas, whereas now we are dealing with just anticipated numbers.
Well, that's good to know because everybody's going to be waiting around. I don't want people waiting and thinking it was coming out next week and they got some time before then.
We will staff communicate with applicants at every step of the way. So okay, so did we, did we have a roll call on the adjournment motion?
We had a second.
I, I missed the second, so I okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, Trent?
I, or present.
It's, it's for the adjournment, so.
Yeah.
Diana?
I.
And I also.
Great, thank you very much for a good meeting.
And I love your background. Very nice. We'll see you next time. Take care.
All right, have a good night, everyone. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye bye.